All right, I'm calling our meeting to order. South Kingston School Building Committee, Thursday, October 2nd at 6:01. So I'll do a roll call. Brian Silvia.
Here.
Michael Pajaza.
Here.
Kate Massenantia, I'm here. Luke Murray.
Here.
Bob Littlefield.
Here.
Jim Manny.
Here.
And we have our project team. Gil Bain. I was going to call you Slam, but Studio G-Aid and Left Field are all in attendance. And we'll start off with public correspondence. I do not recall receiving any public correspondence unless...
We have had a couple of phone calls from abutters at several properties, one on Branch Street, one on Oak Street, and one on Hope Court regarding concerns of vibration that's been caused on site.
Do you want to talk a little bit about how you mitigated that? Or do we want to talk about that during our discussion update?
Well, it's not specifically on the agenda, so however you want to play it, I can put it as part of our project update, or we can talk about it.
If you want to just quickly touch upon, you know, what's going on?
Yes, so the gentleman at Hope Court was outside of the radius that received pre-existing home condition surveys. So we did offer that service to him. TR has contacted him. Have they scheduled that inspection yet at Hope Court? They have been in contact with the resident on Hope Court. At 124 Oak Street is the new construction home. She reached out to us with concerns of damage. We also, as it is a new construction home, for some reason, it was not on the abutters list. She did not receive the initial survey request. So TR has been requested to contact her as well. So they are sending her a mail notification. I spoke with her again today, requested her email address to send it quicker, but I did not receive that from her today. And then also, a resident along Branch Street had concerns about the condition of his home and the construction activities worsening that condition. He did receive a survey prior to construction starting. He was in the list. He did receive the survey. Justin Jones from Left Field did go over to his home today and will be back tomorrow just to feel the vibrations. And we also told him after the vibratory compaction is done, we will have TR come back out and re-inspect his home to see if there is any shifts or damage that may have been caused by construction.
And we have, we have the vibration monitoring going on through all of this, and everything is in, within what would be considered normal ranges, I'm assuming?
We do. We have two monitors, one on the west side, one on the east side. We get an update every night emailed to us that has the results from 7:00 in the morning until 9:00 o'clock at night. And to date, we had one incident like maybe four weeks ago when they were first getting going, just to figure things out. Since then, we have not had any issues at all. There's one number you look at, it needs to be at .5, to give you a reference. Right now, while we're rolling, we're at like .05. So we are like a tenth of what is considered something to start to look at doing something else, so that's where we're at.
Perfect, thank you.
So to be able to react to the concerns of the neighbors, obviously, we want to take their concerns very seriously. We have asked Gil Bain to price out additional vibration monitors that we can place in strategic locations, possibly outside of the site, because some of these abutters that are concerned are pretty far away. So we want to be able to assess the condition of vibration at different points within the neighborhood. So that is something we requested pricing on from Gil Bain to be able to see if that is a method we want to move forward with to address the concerns that we've received to date.
As far as the vibration goes, is this a concern like through the entirety of the project, or is it during just this particular spot? Because you said the vibration could...
I mean, it'll be going on, but very, this is the main, main part of it right now. We're bringing the site up to grade, so it was like three or four feet lower than where it ultimately is going to end up. So we're bringing in three feet of dirt. That dirt all has to be compacted in 12-inch lifts, so across that whole footprint of the building, we're bringing in three feet worth of dirt that has to be compacted in 12-inch, in one-foot lifts. So this is what we're doing now. It's probably got another week or so. That won't be the end of it, but this will, that will be the end of it, happening on a day-to-every-day basis and all throughout the day kind of a thing. So it, it'll subside, I would say, in about, about a week from where you're at right now.
Thank you.
We have also asked Gil Bain to utilize a smaller roller to help lessen the vibration, which they have gone ahead and done. They've worked with Inagro to do that. We've also asked them to explore other methods of compaction that may be less vibratory or less disruptive, and, and that work was completed as well. I won't get into it technically, I can let Mark to speak to that, but essentially, the equipment that would be utilized in order to do this work would cost additional time and money because it is not the method of construction that was planned.
It sounds like the numbers that you're registering, though, like to take those kind of extraneous, I mean, unless anybody else at the table wants to speak to it. I too am not in the business, so, but it sounds like considering what is in the normal range versus what you're actually registering, that would be a little bit overkill.
Yeah, it, cost-wise, for us to add a monitor throughout the neighborhood or wherever else, it's about $1,250 per week, and there's an eight-week minimum, so it's about $10,000 per monitor to add that to the project. And again, we would be monitoring something that is below what's needed on the site itself. So, you know, from a technical standpoint, the further you get away from the monitor heading into the neighborhood, the lesser and less it's going to get. So if it's already below on the site, you know, it's going to probably be even lower, but those monitors would, would justify that if needed, so.
Does anybody have any other thoughts or questions?
Mark, if, if you did procure another, another monitor, where would you place it? Where it, where it would do you any good?
I mean, honestly, I wouldn't want to make that decision. Like, I would leave that up to others to decide.
That would be up to the...
Do we want to put them, you know, here, here, or here? We'll put them wherever anybody wants, but with the money being spent to do so, and I would, I would probably leave that up to, you know, we could average it around the different neighborhoods that surround the property, maybe would be my suggestion, but I would probably lean on somebody else maybe to make that decision.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
So I spoke to the individual on Branch Street, and so did Jamie Gorman, the building official. He gets, tends to get the calls first. I think the initial ones went to the police department. The one ask that I would have, I don't know if we put anything out, but it seems like people have confusion on who to call. So they're bouncing around, which was the individual on Branch Street felt like he was bounced a bit until he got to you, Kate. So I don't know if that's something we've done to the neighbors as far as just put out a piece of correspondence saying, "If you have a problem, this is the number to call." Beyond that, it's been three people. I did speak to that individual, explained we'll try to mitigate, we'll try to, you know, monitor, but it's construction. And it's just like if you're building a house next door. So, you know, if it stays at the current level, hopefully, we won't need additional vibration monitors, but, you know, three people in how long? A week, week and a half of?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So let's go on to item number three, discussion update. I left this as kind of like a big broad overview and status update for the new South Kingston High School project progress. It'll include buyout packages, 100% construction design review, ride approval status, permitting status, abutter, and school updates, items to be salvaged and maintained, and the overall project schedule update.
I will try and cover all of that. If there's anything I miss, please let me know. I'm going to start off with the salvaged items, just because I don't specifically have that in my presentation, and I don't want to forget to talk about it, salvaged items. So we do have a couple of light poles, and I think some picnic tables that are on-site that were requested for the construction team to store. We do have another day before they disrupt the construction activities that are on-site, so they will need to be removed by the town if the town is going to take possession of them, or Gil Bain will have to dispose of them.
I will double-check with Mr. Lynch to, as those were to be donated by the end of the week, so we will all get a status update.
Okay. You want to give an update on that? Have you talked to Liam?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I did speak with Liam, Liam spoke with me, I guess, and he knows the end of the week and said he would be taking care of that by the end of the week. There was a maintenance person on-site today taking it out, like the, there was two picnic tables, some signage, you know, that kind of stuff, so it seems like they've started to remove some of the stuff. The light poles are still there, but he did get ahold of me and reiterated by the end of the week.
We know that's tomorrow, right? The end of the week.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So, so in a nutshell, if it doesn't happen tomorrow, Gil Bain will be disposing of those items because they are, they're going to halt progress on site. All right, going into the rest of our update, we'll start with our schedule update as we stand here, the end of our construction documents. 100% set's been, been issued. We are out to bid on those packages as well. There have been a few addenda that have been issued by the design team as well, which is just some additional information that's been released to supplement the 100% construction documents as those documents are out to bid. So it's just additional information that's given to the bidders. We, on our yellow bar for approvals and permitting, we are looking to submit our building permit application for the full building permit. Right now, we have erosion and sediment control permit as well as our foundations permit. We do need the rest of the building permitted, so we will be submitting that application later this month. So we're kind of up on the tail end of our permitting session as well. GMP-wise, we're going to be into the month of November for our GMPs, and you can see here, we're in our construction duration as well. So some of our key milestones, we have our bids, as we mentioned, for the remaining construction packages due on the 17th. They kind of vary a couple days before or a couple days after that, but that's, that's really the date, anticipating our building permit application on the 24th later tonight. We will be requesting a recommendation for approval for a third-party code review to assist the building department and Union Fire in their permit application review, so that's all tied together. We'll be coming on November 20th for a recommendation from the SBC of the final GMP that'll be inclusive of all the remaining bid packages. That'll be our final construction contract, and then moving it to the town council on the 24th of November. Quick update for Ride. We have received, as you know, our early bid package approval, which is the work that's happening right now, design development approval. We have submitted our 60% construction documents and are looking for their approval for the 60% construction documents towards the end of November, when we're looking to release those remaining bid packages.
Can we just stop at that?
Sure.
I just want to double-check on the approval for, on the 24th, is that...
That's from Ride.
And...
That's the date we're targeting for Ride's approval.
Okay, so our body or town council, we need to do things prior to that, or that is strictly submission to Ride?
No. So the town council and the school committee and school building committee have already approved the 60% construction document set to be submitted to Ride.
Okay.
So now we're just waiting on Ride's review and approval. So there's no action that needs to be taken by any bodies on that date. We're just targeting that date because that's when we're looking to execute the final contract.
Okay.
All right. Mark, do you want to talk a little bit about our four-week look ahead, and then we can get into some photos of site activity?
Sure. I didn't bring my glasses, so I can't read that, but I can tell you kind of, yeah, that's worse. So soil removal, probably is the first one. We have completed removing all of the loam on the site and delivering it over to the Tucker Town address, so that's been completed. We are, we have graded out the parking lot where the teachers will be parking, which is going to be our contractor parking. That just got completed today. We have continued on, as we mentioned earlier, for grading the site and bringing that elevation up. So that's ongoing, and like I said, we probably have into the middle of next week to complete that, and then that will slow down a little bit. We've been, that's the import, import of structural fill, that's part of the bringing up of the site. And we have our concrete subcontractor mobilizing on-site, coming on Tuesday. So one of the line items up there, we'll be looking to excavate for foundations, probably not next week, but the week after. We'll start working on the west side of the building, the one closest to the hazard building, and then working our way to the right, so we'll be pouring those foundations first. Hopefully, we'll see that going on in a couple of weeks. And that's probably about it. Quick Rhode Island Energy update, we are confirmed to finish the work on Sunday. They wanted to do it on Saturday, which would have impacted the power for our groundbreaking, so we moved it to Sunday. So Sunday morning, they'll finish running the wires and sometime around noon, hopefully a little earlier, they'll do the actual cutover, which will take the power down at the school for an hour or two, I've been told. So all of that has been coordinated with Liam, his department, as well as Doug Snow's IT department. They're all on board. They'll all have representatives there, middle to end of the day after we finish doing what we're doing, just to confirm that everything is back up and running and there won't be any glitches for school on Monday. So that's good news, that's a big milestone for us. It allows us to continue on with a bunch of other work, so that's about it for the next three weeks or so. Any questions? Oh, pictures. I think you're going to make me look at the pictures. So there's the picture. That's the drone photo of us before we started stripping the loam, right before we started doing the grading, and another photo kind of doing the same thing. The drone pictures are all kind of the same timeframe, so it looks a lot different than it does here. If you go there now, there is no green, everything is brown. Oh, there you go. So that's a good picture there on the left and the right. That's the structural fill that we just spoke to, or you saw on the three-week look ahead. That's us bringing that grade up. You can see the height difference between the dark brown and that gray. So that's, that's what the vibratory roller's doing, it's placing that, we're spreading it out, and then we're compacting that to achieve the required compaction results, which we, everybody wants, so your building doesn't settle. So that's kind of a good indication of what's going on there with that exercise. That's about it.
What about drainage? I know you're going to form the basins of just, we haven't had luckily, well, except for the forages we had.
Yeah.
One day, but we, you know, just so we make sure erosion and whatnot's contained.
Yep, it's, that is on the radar, and I think that was on the four-week look ahead that I just skipped over and I couldn't see, but yeah, there's, the silt sock and whatnot has all been installed around the perimeter. There's a couple of detention basins that need to be put in, but we had to, in order to do what you're seeing here in the pictures, we couldn't put those in yet, but now we're in the process of grading the road that comes up off of School Street that has a detention basin on each side of it, so we needed to get that in first before we could install those, but that's, it's on the radar.
Anyone else have any questions? I'm working with the powers that be with weather manipulation, making sure we're all set.
It's good. Yeah, it's good. A little bit would be okay, though, because then it gets dusty.
Yeah. You tell me when.
Which is another problem, so anyways.
All right.
Next update is the, actually, is this an agenda item? Kate, I apologize, the project sign approval.
This is part of the overall project schedule, because we do need to get that project sign approved, and, and I do want to talk about the names that are on it. So currently, this is what I've expressed to the project team, that is a reasonable sign and names from my perspective. However, I am one of seven, one of nine, excuse me, and other people may have opinions that they would like to share. So if we want to change what this sign will look like, which is not going to include South Kingston Project Sign, of course, it'll be the picture.
Just this part.
And it has listed Governor, State of Rhode Island, Daniel J. McKee, Rhode Island General Assembly, it has Sikarchi and Lawson from Ride. I have my glasses, but they're for close-up, so they're not going to help me.
Do you want me to zoom in on it?
Yeah, please, if you don't mind. Here we go. Patty DeSesno from Ride, Town of South Kingston Council President Rory McEntee, Town Manager Jim Manny, School Committee Chair Carol Better, School Building Committee Chair myself, and Superintendent of Schools Michael Pajaza. Now, I'm of the, of the mindset to keep it simple, but others may have a different perspective, so if anybody would like this to be altered in any way, please let us know so that we can make sure that it's done proper. Have, have anybody gotten any feedback as to the sound, the sign?
Well, the only thing I would say is you have five council members, they're all independent, and they work hard, and they've all supported the project, so is there any way of getting all their names on there?
I'm sure it can happen, and then we have seven school committee members.
I agree with that, too.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I agree with that, too.
And we have nine school building committee members.
Eh, we're good. I'm just saying, you can take mine off.
No, I guess that's my point, though.
You can take mine off, I don't care, mine either.
That's just my point. It just is, it's kind of like a wedding, you know, if you're inviting your cousins, I can invite mine.
I get it, I get it, but it's, you know, the school, the, the school committee and the town council were real big proponents of this project.
Absolutely.
And they deserve, I think, some recognition, so if you need room, take mine name off for us, I don't care.
I don't think that's the problem. I think it's just how many names do we actually want to put on, on the sign? And we can, they can, I'm pointing at you, but you're not doing it. Slam, I believe, is the one who is designing it. They can put on whoever we want. I, like I said, was trying to keep it simple, but if we want to add to it, we can absolutely add to it.
So simple's good, I agree, but also, you got to give who put so much work into it, you know, they put their reputations on the line for this, too, so I think the school committee, the seven people, and the town council should go on it, and if there isn't enough room, take mine off for us, and whoever else, I don't care, really, but that's, that's what I would say.
So that feedback we'll want to give to Kathy, and she can draft a new version that includes the five counselors and the seven school committee members, and then we'll distribute that. We want to do a pretty quick turnaround once she makes that adjustment, so that we can actually get this sign put up.
Yes, and just for context, this sign will go outside of the construction fencing, it's just a public show for the community to understand what's happening behind the scenes.
Thank you.
All right, this is a separate agenda item, so I'll hold here before I continue. The recommendation to award for third-party. Is there anything else we want to discuss on your first agenda item before I keep going? Did I miss anything? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Philip Conte with Studio G-Aid. I just want to update you on a recent meeting we had with Rhode Island Energy regarding the new service to the high school. So that meeting was yesterday, Gil Bain, Left Field, myself, and Denver, I forget his last name, last name from Rhode Island Energy, we met at the field office to discuss the new service that's going to be coming into the high school. This is the new service, not the temp service. So he wanted to familiarize himself with the design, which we went over. He is in agreement that this is the right approach, and he wanted to lay out some expectations and what to expect, similar to how they did the temp service. They do their design, they will draft easements, they will have a cost. They're going to do the same thing, they're starting now, on the new service to the high school. We anticipate that that's probably going to be about two to three months' worth of time that they do that. But what I want to make you aware of is that in discussions with Denver, we heard from them that there are two electrical services along School Street. One of them, for them, for Rhode Island Energy, is at 97% capacity. The school is going to be drawing a significant amount of load, so they're going to have to be doing some load shifting. There will be, what appeared to me, to be significant Rhode Island Energy work off property on their lines, on their gear, on their equipment. However, that cost will be transferred to this project. So I don't know what that is. Denver did not have an idea. I know we're carrying money for utility costs, et cetera. But what I want to know is that, or I wanted you to know, is that in about two to three months, we're going to be getting the design and the cost from Rhode Island Energy. It may be significant, as opposed to what a typical project would be.
Curiosity, then again, is this contingency, or is there a line item specifically for utility? And then if that goes over, what happens?
So we do have a specific line item for utility costs, but as Phil mentioned, this is going to be above and beyond, so if it does exceed our budget, that would be a contingency draw, from the owner's contingency.
Does anybody have any questions about that? How much different is the current, is, are the current lines to what is, they're going to be planning for? Don't we already have lines coming in?
We do, but we have to move them. Right, right now, we moved the existing service overhead.
Yeah.
It's part of the temporary work, and that we need to run a new one, because the existing one ran right through our new foundation, so we do have to run a new service to the building. But I think your question is more of...
The draw is going to be less, no?
The load that is drawn currently versus the load of the new building. I don't have that answer, Phil. I don't know if you know that off the top of your head or not.
You don't need to, you don't...
Yeah.
I mean, if we want to, maybe, maybe Rhode Island Energy can talk with us and let us give, as we get further. It just seems odd, like there's already a school there, there's already a load, lines going there. I understand you have to move them, but...
Sure, so we don't understand how Rhode Island Energy services this entire area with their lines. We do know that both schools, there's going to be concurrent use, so that may impact how they're handling the load. I guess what I'm saying is Rhode Island Energy has work to do. They are going to transfer those costs onto this project, just because that's what they do. I wanted to just give you as much advance warning, so that when we have this discussion two to three months from now, we know that it was coming and it's not a shock. Will the new school use more electricity? Yes, we are air-conditioning this school. We had this discussion quite some time ago, that yes, the building is smaller, but we are introducing air conditioning, which is a significant electrical load. So again, I'll go back and say that they were absolutely fine with our approach, and they really had no real issues about our routing, which is all underground. It's just going to be providing the amount of power we need at the time that we need it, based on their existing infrastructure.
Thank you.
I believe the last item on the general update was for the groundbreaking, update for the groundbreaking ceremony. So just as a reminder, we do have our groundbreaking ceremony this Saturday, the 4th of October, at 10:00 a.m. It's going to be in the student parking lot behind the existing high school. We will have several speakers there, there'll be refreshments there. The general public is invited and welcome and encouraged to attend, to be able to celebrate this event. And then Kate, I don't know if you want to go through any of the do-outs specifically, but I think, just a general update, I think everything is pretty well assigned and handled to this point.
Yeah, I don't think there's, I don't think there's anything, I mean, we're basically, we're going to have, the ceremony's going to start at 10:00. There'll be a pledge of allegiance done by one of our students. I'll kind of introduce the situation, and then it will move on to, do we know if the governor's coming? Has he responded to us that we are aware of? Has he responded to us that we are aware of? No? We don't know?
He's not on the speaker list.
Okay.
He could come, but he's not on the speaker list.
Final outreach, one will happen again tomorrow, but all indications right now are no.
Okay. All right. And then, so from there, I believe, I don't have the speaker list in front of me, but there's about five of us who are going to do nice succinct speeches. Mr. Manny, one of them, Rory, and by the time we get to the end, it will be Chip who will be just kind of passing it off to the shovels in the ground, I guess. So yeah, it'll be pretty concise and lots of celebrating, and then there will be refreshments available to those who would like some. But that's about it, from what I...
And mini shovels, too.
And mini shovels. We get to go home with mini shovels if you want them. We do not have our own designer hard hats, though.
I advocated for it, but got told no. All right. Any other questions on the general project update? Or Kate, anything that I missed?
No, I think, not only did we hit the general project update, the only other thing I have, the 100% construction design review, I don't know why I put it in there, I just popped it in there. Do we have an idea? I think maybe it was more of to make sure we're clear as when that will occur.
So that was, I think you're referring to the 100% construction documents. So those were issued, and I'm currently out to bid. All right. So we don't anticipate another design review, a formal design review, other than the permit review. The plans, you know, are the same since the last design review that we held. It's just further constructability details.
Great. And then we hit item number four already with the project sign. We hit number five with the groundbreaking ceremony finalization details. So that brings us to item number six, which would be a discussion action, an appointment of a school building committee member to the change order task force. Do you want to talk to that?
Sure. So the task force that we presented, the recommended task force we presented at last building committee meeting, we also presented at the following town council meeting. We are looking for a designee from the school building committee, town council, superintendent's office will be part of it as well, either superintendent or the principal, deputy town manager, finance director, and myself from left field as the OPM will make up the task force. So we are looking for a designee to be able to meet weekly and review proposed change orders from Gil Bane. I'm happy to go through kind of the threshold limits again, but essentially you'll be reviewing and either approving a recommendation to move forward to Gil Bane, or moving it up further to council.
So from this body, we already have Luke, Mike, Michael, excuse me, and Brian in their own roles.
Yes.
So the folks who are left would be David, Dave, myself, Chip, Bob, Jim, Terry, or Liam.
Or Bob.
Or Bob. Who could be appointed to this task force? Does anybody have any thoughts as to who they would like to see representing school building committee for the task force?
Don't all raise your hands at once.
So I have a question. So this is more pragmatic, right? This is construction, Liam's the, you know, Liam's not here, first of all, so I'll point that out. But being the facilities plant director, I would think he may be the most logical choice, but I don't know what his time obligations are. So I'm hesitant to make that obligation without him here. So I don't know, Michael, your thoughts?
I was thinking Dave Palazzetti as well. But again, it is a matter of them not being here, and normally I wouldn't mind doing the, well, you're not here, so too bad. But in this particular situation, I want to make sure that they have the bandwidth to be able to do the turnaround time that it sounds like you folks will need.
Yeah, we are requesting a weekly standing meeting to be held.
Virtual?
Virtual, yes. Sorry, virtual standing meeting. We do not need to meet in person. So you can call from your car, your office, bedroom, wherever.
Kate, when we, is it critical we make this decision? I know, do we have anything in the pipeline where we could delay this decision, where we could get some feedback from the two that we've just named?
There's a couple things that are possibly in the pipeline. One thing that came up today that you and I need to discuss is some drain clearing on some of the storm drains that we need to tie into, which is on the town side. So we need to determine if it's, that's a town scope of work, or if we want an agro sub to take care of it. That would be a change order. If we do the vibration monitoring, additional monitors, that would be a change order. And then the reconciliation of the final soils, if that goes over the allowance, that would be a change order. So those are the three pending that we have open right now.
So we would have a quorum, though, regardless of the last appointee, right? Perspectively, because we already have enough on the task force to create a quorum?
Do we have a town council?
Do we need a quorum since it's a task force? I don't believe that's subject to OMA.
Well, we do need a quorum as far as the rules of what we laid out, because it was a majority decision, but...
Yes, okay.
So it was a simple majority. But I'm just pointing out, like, we don't, we may be able to delay it just for the sheer fact we can still have meetings and make decisions. I don't know.
And we also, do we have another building committee before council? Because our next council meeting, we're asking, we asked for an appointment of a council designee. Because I know council is, we've got a couple weeks for council. 14th, oh no, we're two days after that.
I mean, we can appoint someone and then...
They can accept or deny.
Reappoint if we need to. But I mean, to Luke's point, we currently don't have a town council member either. And so when will that appointment happen, on the 14th?
Yes, we have requested an appointment by the, at our last meeting, at the following meeting, which is the 14th. And then we're two days after that on the 16th?
Yep.
I'm sorry?
Can we do larger?
Yes, we, so if the building committee meeting's the 16th, that's only two days, I think. We can manage two days.
Okay. So then we'll table this agenda item to October 16th.
Okay.
All right. So then that will bring us to item seven, again, discussion action, recommendation of third-party code review for South Kingstown High School project.
Yes, so we did receive two bids for the third-party code review consultant. Again, that is a service that will review the permit drawings on behalf of the building department and Union Fire District, review those findings with the authorities having jurisdiction themselves, to be able to assist in the permit application review. This is a very big project, so it does put a lot of strain on those departments. So we do want to be able to provide that assistance to them. So the two bids that were received, one was from Plan Review Services LLC, and the other was from Fourleaf Inc. We did review those proposals, as well as do reference checks. Both firms were well-received. The first bid is, I can't see either, $25,240 from Plan Review Services LLC. And from Fourleaf Inc., their bid is at $30,200, so pretty close to each other, both under budget. The budget for this service we have is $70,000. So we're well below budget for this service. They are pretty equal, there were not really any strong frontrunners. The only thing I'll add is I do believe Fourleaf Inc. has worked with the town of South Kingstown before, and Luke, I know that you spoke with the building official to assess his thoughts and feelings on it.
Yeah, so I spoke with Jamie Gorman, who's had experience with Fourleaf, and they were actually hired in for a time for our reviewing when we were down on staff. Positive reviews there. It just so happens to the individuals from Fourleaf have splintered off into this group, Plan Review Services. So, you know, essentially, he has experience with these individuals who are now at this Plan Review Services and recommended them as well, spoke very highly. So I don't think we can go wrong with either of these, based on his feedback, so it's really up to the committee.
Yeah, the only differentiator that I would like to note is that Fourleaf Inc. did bring on a subcontractor to their team that does an FPA fire review, and they do provide some MWBE percentage points for the project. So they are able to, I think it's 30% of their bid is with MWBE labor. So we do have, just for everybody's knowledge, for the state, we do have to satisfy a requirement of 7.5% of minority business and 7.5% of women-owned business. So this does help us achieve that goal for the state, as well as, just as an overall benefit to the community. So with that, I can open it up to discussion between the two bidders.
Where you have the total bid amount is the dollar, and then the points next to it, it looks like, can you zoom back out?
Oops, sorry.
What does it say? Plan Review Services, they have a higher point and lower cost when it comes to the points? Where, I guess I'm looking just for a little bit more information around what brought them... Oh, the total points, okay.
The total points taken to account, and again, this was just my assessment, we did not hold a full committee review on this, just because it's a smaller scope of work, and it's a pretty simple proposal form. But we rate them based on their capability, capacity qualifications, differentiators, staff qualifications, legal participation, MWBE participation, and cost is also weighted. So with that, the averages between all of those, Fourleaf actually averaged higher, they got additional points for MWBE, as well as differentiators. They're a slightly larger firm with slightly more of a history, so that's why I gave them another couple points.
Does anybody at the table have an opinion, a thought, make a motion?
I'll just ask, how important, because we're very close on differentiation, right? $5,000 difference on the size of a project. How important are the MWBE points to us at this point?
Well, based on the overall project, it is a small percentage of our overall project participation, but it does show that we are putting forth a best faith effort to be able to achieve those goals with the state.
I think my only personal was that we have direct experience with Fourleaf. I understand these individuals went over to a new firm, but it's a newer firm. Fourleaf's been around for some time, they do this work regularly for municipalities. So personally, I would probably feel it would be worth, especially this size of product, to have a firm that's a little bit more established. That's my opinion on it, others may vary.
Are you going to make that into a motion?
With that, I'll make a motion to recommend Fourleaf to provide third-party code review services for the school building project to the town council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that passes. And so our recommendation would be to the town council to go with Fourleaf.
All right, thank you.
I do have on here standing agenda item number eight, discussion update overview, status update for Curtis Corner project planning. I altered the name of that instead of just saying athletic fields, because it's more than that. Clearly, it's demoing the building, and it's not just about the athletic field. So calling it the Curtis Corner project now. Do we have anything that we can share at this point, or is that something we should bring to the next? Oh, look at you.
Yep, so we are looking for a recommendation at the next building committee meeting for the advancement of the next stage of documentation over to Ride. Ride is still in review of the last package that we submitted to them. Because of the scope, we're going to kind of meet with them to see if we can submit this through the expedited design review portal. Since it's such a small scope, you know, we don't think it warrants the multi-step review process. Again, this is just the demolition and site stabilization of the existing, or partial demolition of the existing middle school project, or building. So the intent of the expedited review is to be able to bid this out at the same time, get our bid results in, at the same time that we're asking for an approval for GMP-2, to be able to have that cost certainty to continue forward into the next phase, which is the design of the athletic program over there. So we are looking for approval, our next approval for Ride at our next building committee meeting. We'll be reviewing bids in November and asking for approval at the end of November, on the 24th, at the same time we're asking for approval for GMP number two.
That timeline, does that put us in a place where we could have that particular project done by June 30th?
For the demolition?
Yeah.
Yes, I don't think that's more than a six-month project. And I assume you're asking the question for reimbursement from Ride? Yes, yeah, that would, that should get us within that reimbursement period for Ride. Yes. I knew where you were going with that one.
I'm just clarifying, I think that process will not include Gil Bane, right?
Correct.
It will be a design bid, traditional model.
Correct. And so we need to, before we move into the design of the athletic fields, yes, the bidding for the demolition and site stabilization will be a lump sum GC bid. We are going to hard bid that project. We are not utilizing the construction manager at risk method, because it is frankly just a very small scope of work that didn't warrant that level of manpower. And the final field design, we do still need to discuss the design strategy for that, whether that will be a design-build through a field company that does that type of work all the time, or whether we're going to utilize the designers that we have for the high school project to be able to fully design that project and be able to hard bid that out. So that is a strategy we need to further discuss as we move forward.
So the concern that I have is time, because if you back up the schedule based on the 24th approval, I don't think we're going to have enough time between the 16th, we've got to get it approved, we've got to get it out to bid, right?
I'm sorry, we're only talking about design-build for the field, not for this portion. This portion that the Studio Jade's team is designing, the demolition and site stabilization, that's going to be bid out this year.
Right. So, but what I see on the 24th is demolition and site stabilization, I'm assuming that's for CCMS.
Correct.
So that means that they're approving a purchase contract, right? Purchase of a ward of contract to a vendor, a construction contractor.
Yes.
Okay. So that is a month and a half away. On the 16th, we'd be approving recommendations CCMS, demolition and site stabilization to Ride, so we'd have the documents in progress. I guess what I'm, let me put it another way. In order to get this thing out to bid and get to award, I need it in the next two weeks. Because the process, we've got to put it on the market probably three weeks-ish, trying to make the recommendation, get it to school committee, get it to council for award, write the memos and all that. So I'm not trying to be difficult, but I'm just...
No, 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 not at all.
So I think it's a discussion we need to have to realize the schedule. I think we need to reback this up and make sure, the GMP is fine, I mean, you guys have a lot more flexibility with that, but with public bid process, it doesn't always go as quick as we'd like. So I just want to make sure that we're both tracking.
Okay. Yes, I apologize, I was confusing the scope of work with the field's scope, so I'm getting what you mean.
The question that keeps coming up to me, because now that people see we're rolling along with the high school building, that is anticipated time when we would, when the fields would be open. So are we looking at around the same time as the high school opens, or are we looking at earlier? Like, that's what I wanted to ask for clarification on.
We haven't finalized...
We haven't, we haven't finalized that. Again, we have to decide if it's going to be, if the fields are going to be a design-build or design-bid-build procurement method, but ideally, we are targeting to open the athletic fields at the same time as the high school in the fall of 2027. So we just need to keep that train moving, if we are to hit that target.
Agreed.
If we're going to do design-bid-build, we would have to get a partner on board, I'm assuming, fairly soon, right?
We've got one. It's sitting right there.
I'm sorry, design-build, not design-bid-build, design-build. We'd have to get a partner on board fairly soon to work with the project team, so...
Correct.
I'm just, again, I'm looking for some clarity on that date as well, like, when do we need, if, well, one, we need to make the decision on model, so we need to review it as a committee.
Yes.
And then we need to make a decision, and then we need to go. You know, get, I think we're all anticipating, like, we're going to start getting pressure. Athletics are a big, important thing around here, it's great that we've got stuff going, they're going to move on to the next thing. It's great, you're moving soil out there, what about athletics? I mean, Terry's not here, but I'm sure, I'll speak to him.
The question is coming up, like, you know, people, there was a lot of, like, you know, questions about the building, right? And now people are feeling like, all right, good, like, we're feeling the vibrations every day, and like, we know this is happening, and we can see it. So, and that's a positive thing, but now the questions are coming up about the athletic fields. And so, like, that's why, I agree with you, like, the pressure's coming, we need, and so I think if we don't have it open by the time we're opening up the high school, it's not going to look great.
When can we start mapping out a schedule, as far as, clearly, we would love to see the bids for demolition and site, like, 11:24, we would like to see that happen. Hearing that that might not be possible with a time crunch, unless there's something we can do to make that happen. So taking it into consideration that that's not there, that on 11:24, we're simply going to be going with town council approval for GMP number two, how do we start building out the timeline for the opening of the fields? Do we start that, like, at our next building committee meeting, we start working through schedule? Like, or we need to make a decision as to what method we're going to go forward, so that would be in our next meeting? And then after that, then we can start?
That would be my recommendation. Yeah, at our next meeting, we need to decide if we're going to do design-bid-build or design-build, because those are on two different tracks, schedule-wise.
Everyone okay with that? All right? I love building our next agenda in this meeting. It's actually my favorite, because I at least have focus for the next meeting. All right. I think we've hit all the questions, and any answers, unless anybody has some more that have popped up. All right, that brings us to community comment, to which there are no community members, and discussion action next meeting and agenda items. We clearly talked about a couple agenda items, and our next meeting, as we stated before, is October 16th, 6:00 p.m. here, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We adjourn at 6:54.